This conference will now be recorded.
For the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with its breathing, justice, and all. Thank you, and welcome everybody to this special board meeting, which was called the purpose of conducting the business as stated on the agenda and will be limited to those items of this purpose. I also would like to announce that in view of this, and what can be accomplished today, that the regular board meeting July 6th, which is Monday, will not be required, meaning no items for that agenda at present time. So we'll offer that as a long weekend, three weeks of meetings. But then, you know, the primary task in front of us this evening is to consider the 2020, 2021 budgets, which consist of the general fund, the allegedly plastic water fund, the school fund, and the public hearing was held. And I can report that there were no comments, in fact, there was no participation from the public recorded, and therefore, we noted that, and that will be noted in the record of this. So what we have in front of us tonight is the intended budget with some revisions that were made following the last work session we had on the budget. And actually, it changes the, depending on what else we determine this evening, it would change the effective tax rate from $5.70, as it was in the tentative budget that was presented with the public's consideration, and would hence reduce the tax rate to $5.59 per thousand, which represents savings over the last year of $0.77 per thousand. We were able to accomplish that, and I'll let Mindy address the specific areas that so far have been reflected in budget adjustments since the work session.
So we went back to the village tax levy from last year, which reduced our overall revenue. However, it had an increase, the revenues of about $20,000. We adjusted the Essex County fines and tortures because we're pulling $60,000 out of the total fines, and that was a bit high, so that added back in some additional monies. However, on the reduction side of these spending, in the police department, we changed the overall amount of money that was set aside for academy expense from $42,000 to $15,000. In conjunction with that, we did increase the training expenses from $12,000 to $17,000, since we now have somebody in there that really likes to do training. Our vehicle in repair maintenance, we dropped $2,000 from $12,000 to $10,000, because we've never used the full budgeted amount, and with the rotation of vehicles that we generally do, it keeps our maintenance costs lower. And then, we also made a modification to the fire budget. There was additional monies originally budgeted for roof and the bay bathrooms, which they're going to do this year, so we pulled that out, $38,000. That's going to come out of this year's budget instead, and as it stands, we just have $50,000 set aside for the new chassis on the fire truck. And, I have a moment here. We reduced the material and supply expense for sidewalks. Generally, that budget is higher, because we never know how much salt and sand we're going to use, but we did reduce it down to $60,000 from the original $75,000. We didn't want to go too low, because if we have a really icy winter, we could potentially utilize that. And then, other than that, those were really the only names.
If we retained some dollars in the contingency fund, normally we...
We didn't put anything in contingency, but the supply rates are kind enough that if we have a large expense, that we cover it.
So those are the, those are the results of the last work session that was presented, and at this point, I think we can open the discussion going forward, just any other others before we would act on the general for the upcoming year.
But if you give $55,000 to the police cars going there, are we okay with having an all Tahoe fleet?
It's not necessarily that we're going to purchase a Tahoe. I left the 55 in there, because we haven't gotten Colts back on the other two yet, and I'd rather have more budgeted for it than less, if...
I just weigh more than one car at a time, so that's perfect.
Right. But depending upon which way they go and...
But was that 35, or was it more than? That's all I hear, I don't know everybody else.
Does that 35 include the add-ons that we all seem, always seem to get caught up in, because they're running about $12,000 to $13,000 a vehicle?
A car with all-wheel drive is probably about $20,000.
Okay. The decision, however, as to what type of vehicle you buy, we usually leave that up to the department and the commissioners to work out.
I think one other thought, because I know part of the thing that I've heard is that the Tacos are nice, because you can see better, as far as to see what's going on. But I know the Tacos are extremely expensive, and a car is more reasonable, and it's all-wheel drive. What about a vehicle, or not, we're not...
There's only certain cars in these, and please try to make sure that your mind's something just off the lot that, as we're designing this design, the wheels up for the work.
Okay. I didn't know, just a thought.
We usually don't get involved in the actual decisions within the budget on these. Normally, the departments and the commissioners work this stuff out. I would be more inclined, at this point, that I recognize where you're trying to...
But in the past, I've always had, when I was chief, it always came up with the vehicle we're going to get, just having some of the luck in the last eight years.
But, you know, I don't question whether there's wisdom in making that decision right now and tying the department to something that really hasn't worked out, and commissioners haven't produced any guidance on.
But I think, too, I mean, we have 55 budgeted, not knowing where revenues are going to be based upon the economy right now. It may end up being a lower budgeted item, because we're not going to buy anything until we know where we stand revenue-wise. If we do have the revenues that come in from fines and what have you into the general funds, we can always take that and put it towards the reserves for an upcoming year when we buy another vehicle, if we have excess left over, or for repair maintenance on a different vehicle.
Just one person.
I'm not saying that here, but the thought doesn't have merit, I'm just saying that I prefer we stay focused on budget. Leaving that money in there does leave that option available, as Mindy indicated, there's another way that that could be addressed, but at the same time, we give...
We talked about this last year, and then we left the money in there, and then we came to buying the car. I, as a commissioner, had no idea the car was bought, and so you know the car was here, and I had no idea.
One thing I'm going to add to this, hopefully, to the motion that adopts this general fund budget, is that our capital purchases over $50,000 will be deferred until we're later in the year, you know, with the resources to support it. This is an uncertain year, in the sense that some of the revenues that were worked on by Mindy's office and the mayor's office, literally are our best guess. There's no way of predicting what this summer is going to do. Last example, right now, is the parking revenues. We made some educated guesses on those, they may or may not fall in, but they do, to a large extent, help to support the general fund. So if we start falling off on revenues, we would want to hold off on capital purchases, especially the large ones. There's a couple left in here, but anything over 50 would also cover the vehicle that you're concerned with. We've got a big dump truck in there, and I think the water department has some replacement vehicle when we get to that budget.
What about if, you were wondering, what if money contingency, would it be possible to lower that number and put the difference in contingency, so that when it came to purchasing the car, there would actually be a discussion, that the money would have to be in contingency to buy a Tahoe?
That's up to the board.
I mean, the money would still be in there, the option would still be there, but to me, it would force a discussion about the car when they decide to buy it, other than just...
And I support where you're going on this, there should be a discussion, but ultimately, it's a board decision anyway, but I wouldn't disagree with that approach to it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. As I've said in the past, I think we should have half, standing in half, as far as they're all full wheel drive.
Have to keep one, either one, we've been down and talked to Bill about. I mean, you don't have to be a police commissioner. I did mention it to Bill, and he said, "You look at the equipment we have to have in here now." And said, "There's a lot more than those guys." We've been down to the local, go for a ride.
That's an excuse for state police and NYPD, it's a bunch of bull. Jay Curtis used to say the same thing. We're talking, there's a lot of police departments...
I don't disagree with that, but a lot of trying to say this. Other agencies are managing their little vehicles, I just don't understand why we can't. This seems like at least a decent compromise between the two of them.
I don't think so.
I don't have the documents, like, it seems like both the obvious, just talk to them. Have you been to talk to them since we met?
But then again, we never had a budget meeting, because what was, what was, I don't know what the process was, my stuff, so I didn't know what was in there until three days before we had a meeting.
So we did have a work session, and again, I mean, all of the comments from that session, we had tried to...
No, no, I mean, it wasn't even power. Not like, Bill and I have a meeting and sit down, and he says, "This is what I want to put in the budget," and maybe that with us.
We can do that going forward, though, have a meeting with commissioners, the department, and myself, if you want. I don't have a problem with that, I just didn't know it followed, did it in the past, and I'm more than happy to make a modification, 100%.
We can do the 15 minutes to change, to change, and 35, try to purchase, and then if you end up buying the Tahoe, you gotta do 15.
Is there a possible suggestion that, given, as the mayor said, the uncertainties of this summer and the revenue, that the board adopt some policy that says any expenditure over X dollars, regardless of whether it's in the budget or not, needs board approval?
That's sort of where I was trying to go with the capital budget, Janet, because there are, there are a couple, there's one large expense in there for a dump truck that will replace something the department's hoping to do, but I'm a little uncomfortable with the unknowns here, so I think a policy along that line certainly would be in order.
In other words, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean the department gets it. So you adopt a policy that says something to that effect, and set a dollar limit on what type of expenditures need to come back to the board for approval, you know, that might help solve what the debate you're having now.
Janet, if you refresh my memory, is it $25,000 where they have to, so it's $25,000 as it is, or is it 35? I thought it was...
But for purchase orders, you have to fill out a purchase order for it before, anyway, so that is the, if that's the contingency on it, where they have to fill out a purchase order before they make the purchase, don't sign a purchase order until there's a conversation.
That provision of the state law deals with when you have to go out to bid. If a contract for a purchase is over, I'm gonna, I always look it up, it changed a couple of years ago, or for services, that just affects whether you have to go out to bid or not.
So the next question, would be $50,000, would that be the appropriate threshold, or do we need to lower it?
I think you've got to make it high enough so that normal operating replacements can be done without the license. In my thinking, my own view of it, it's only my view at this point, would be...
I mean, you could put a dollar limit on capital expenditures, you could also say any vehicle purchase, if the vehicle purchase is the question here, that any vehicle purchase, regardless of whether it's in the budget or not, has to come back to the board for review at the time that the purchase is desired or requested.
It's realistic, that would accomplish, I think, what we're dancing around.
So would that achieve your overall goal of wanting sort of an oversight slash threshold as a means to monitor the budget and manage purchases? Or if we just make it specific to cars?
I'm looking at it more as an overall precaution, given certain uncertainty with revenues in general that we're dealing with. I just responded, we just restricted to a NICO thing, where NICO is approaching the legislature, because a lot of our villages and cities are having this, are having a revenue problem right now. We don't happen to be in that position for the current budget here, but there's no saying that things won't. I mean, the uncertainties here are, if we go through another issue like we just did the last three months, then we're definitely going to have some issues, because the legislature is involved in other actions.
And anybody that we decide to do moving forward is going to be more expensive, because we won't be able to pay for it, so we will have to borrow for it.
My thoughts are more about going forward, we know where we stand right now, I know that we're going to close the budget here up, we'll be okay. I don't think we'll have the surpluses in the budget that some years we've seen, it's not necessarily that, but we've also, we're also, this particular budget does invade the fund balance, $575,000, which is closely kind of a concern of our fund balance. We can do that, it's certainly, I'm not uncomfortable doing that right now, but I hate to think that we're going to have to go for the next three or four years. I don't want to see us in the position that the county was in five, six years ago, when they had to start leveraging taxes to make up for, you know, the deficiency they had in fund balance. On the other hand, we're also coming into a period with projects that will have, it will give, I think, the board, future boards, it will give them some comfort, knowing that we've got some money to pay the bills while we're waiting for reimbursement from the state, because although we are advised that our current grants are still secure, the more recent grants, including the Solschuh grant, are on hold. Checks in the mail, right? Of course, I think we're not moving ahead with that project, and that's not on the budget in here either. So those are some of the issues that we're wrestling with. I'm not predicting those day, but I'm also conscious of the fact that, and I had this discussion today with our healthcare people in our phone conversation supervisor, that as we invite and as we receive more and more visitors in the community, we are not 100% certain that, you know, that we'll be able to avoid, as we have so far, repeated virus strains. We're talking with, Bill Moore and Mary Jane had a discussion yesterday, where we're talking, because Main Street is still kind of 50/50, whether people are really convinced to use masks or not, or even to carry them. We're talking about the possibility of putting a table at this park and staffing it with people who would be there with a supply of masks and sanitizer, educational, and focus largely, to see if we can deep that up, and I was hoping that maybe, maybe we could get some of our younger people in the community engaged in that activity, since we're only next sentence.
And just, since you brought it up, and not to be too direct, is that hopefully, you could, the board can have a conversation, and maybe you would boost, as far as ideas that we could, contingency plans that we could create if we ever have to do, if we ever have to move back a phase, and restaurants are starting to, are more constricted again, just having it in the back of our head is regarding...
One of the issues in here, and one of the reasons for holding back on some of the larger capital items, would obviously, assuming the revenues were all realized, would help us to have to make them over like that, if that became necessary. I mean, so far, we're incurring some expense, that we're sharing some of the costs with rules for, like, the little cars, the police department standing out. You know, I've indicated that we would pay for those and keep them coming, they're providing the funds, of course, but, you know, that, we've gone through a thousand of those cars already, and I fully expect with the summer ahead, that we'll probably have a lot more. You know, I think, I think our traffic control officers who are extensively on the street all day long, should be, should be doing that.
It's funny, it's mentioned, and we just walked by, there was someone without a mask, and I understand that we're not necessarily near anyone, but...
But there's part of the confusion, is there a law in the other state you have to wear a mask to walk down Main Street?
No.
So I mean, there's the whole...
Unless you're unable to maintain social distancing.
It's the governor's, it's the governor's, in his executive orders, there exists a recommendation, if you cannot maintain social distancing, and that sets up the ambiguity for the public. But our Main Street sidewalk, when it's busy, is only six feet wide, so...
So you should...
Two people passing in opposite directions are not able to be at six feet, so I'd like to see more masks used along the street. The question was whether, in this way, was whether or not we should pass a local law that would apply to just like classic. I said, "I'm not sure that we can do and override what the state has already put in place, or hasn't chosen to put in place, depending on how you do it." And therein lies the dilemma, with any, of course. And enforcement's another issue, I mean, we literally would have to put our officers who are on duty on the sidewalk, and actually, that might not be a bad idea, and that might have to happen anyway.
And here's an anecdotal aside, that prevents someone like me, who, when I have my son, to be able to walk down Main Street, because although I've trained him, I say mask up, he pulls his mask up, I say mask down, he pulls his mask down, yet I see a group of six people who are, they seem to be family travelers, not wearing masks, walking down Main Street. So we're unable, so it's, it impacts the local individual who would like to still enjoy, at least make their way out, so we have to make an active choice to avoid a Main Street. So I feel like that's a, that seems to be a common sort of form of feedback that I've been receiving, is that you're not going, that's your choice, it's not, if you can't maintain social distancing, but if you're walking down Main Street, I'm like, I've, we've all walked down Main Street millions of times, there's no way you can maintain social distancing, so you at least have a mask on.
You can't now, but once it gets busy.
Well, that's when, over the weekend, when we walked down, if you can just have it and take it down and up, for those are people that are not even doing it.
So this isn't the budget, is it?
No. However, it does have budget...
Implications.
And I'll just chime in on that thought, I think it would be, I'm not sure that you can preempt state law, that you can dictate that people wear masks, that, it's a suggestion. I'm pretty sure that you, we cannot by village law make that a criminal event, not to wear a mask, because criminal law are set most, are by state statute, but that's, that's a digression on the budget discussion.
Just to close out that discussion, the governor does have certain requirements, and there's certain penalties. For example, if you walk into a restaurant, and they're found that the staff are not wearing masks, there are penalties and fines for that. There is a phone number that people can dial, it's simple for all New York City, where I actually see the effect of it, there are, there have been a handful of referrals that have come back into Lake Placid, I would say maybe two, three, four that I'm aware of. One of them deals with a hotel, and something that they were charged, but not, we don't know the outcome of that investigation. Another was a bar serving outdoors, where it's very difficult, if you're able to serve at a table outdoors a beverage, and you're not wearing a mask, so you can see what happens, but generally speaking, each one of those is being investigated by appropriate local authorities. The ones here so far, one is going to Department of Health, who has jurisdiction, the other, the other one, which was a local liquor license issue, is going, went to our photo officer upstairs, and they have procedures that they're following, they have a preliminary warning, if there's a repeat, it gets a little more serious, but ultimately, that is how the state is addressing the governor's orders, or directives at this point, executive orders. So that's what we know about the circumstances at this point. I'm inclined to agree with you, Janet, that we don't have a home rule on that issue. But I am, I will be honest, as we open up to the vacation in public, I'm, I certainly am sensitive to our residents who are worried about people coming into the community, I'm worried about the quarantining requirements, and how well effectively those can be monitored. Those are legitimate concerns that our community shares, and, you know, the last thing we want to see is have that issue start around here. And again, as I said, we're also keeping in close touch with our healthcare institution, so there is periodic conversation going on there. I'd ask them to give us any additional guidance that they might see that we could do, that would protect our community, and likewise, the whole county.
Craig, I have another quick question. One is, if you're, in my understanding, if you own an establishment, you make a law for that establishment yourself, but you have to wear a mask, if that is something the governor committed?
The governor has given you the permission to refuse service or refuse interference without, without your violating their civil rights.
And the other question I have is, I've heard that if you're coming from certain states, the governor says you have to quarantine for 14 days, does that mean back when New York City was really bad, and we had nothing going on up here, that when we went places, we had to quarantine? Or does that mean someone coming from Florida, or the northern section, where there's no problem, they still...
Two different issues here. The early, the early issues, the 14-day quarantine was kind of a general rule of thumb that was being recommended, but more recently, the governor has stipulated nine states in the nation that have spiked, and they're above a certain standard.
So that means all counties, even if the county has nothing going on in that county? I mean, look at the ambiguity here.
But I guess, I guess the point of that is, you would not likely know whether these people were coming from a county that was...
We wouldn't even know if they're coming from Florida.
Well, if they're driving, if they're driving with a Florida license...
But they can rent a car, I mean, you know, we've already run into this, we've had people call us.
He's also, he also has standards set with the airports, people flying in, the airport guidelines have some responsibility, I just read about that yesterday. So I think they're doing what they can, is it going to be a perfect world? None of this stuff is perfect.
Okay, and then one more question, I know people that have come up from Florida, and the first thing they did when they got here was go... here was COVID testing. Now, four days later, if they're negative for COVID-19, they still sit around for another nine days?
I can't answer that.
We're, we're back to so much ambiguity that it's hard to get people in.
The 14 days is not ambiguous. So I mean, that's, that was very clear and I've got copies of that order on my desk.
And I think they added in the nine states today.
They did, seven more.
Would, would it be proven then to ask, maybe Jay asked the county, because counties seem to have the inside here. I mean, because we've been asking questions and there are legitimate questions, in my opinion.
Jay has taken every question that we've directed going back to the county and they've responded.
All right, I'll check to them on those.
Very well. I don't have, I have no issue with what our county's doing. They're, they're certainly being very, very conservative so far.
Maybe we as hoteliers can check to where they're, where they're from. They fly up pretty easily.
That's cool.
I mean, it's doubtful anybody's going to be traveling.
Providing they put the correct address in. I mean, we're at the mercy of the people telling things.
So we're getting off and out of the agenda, which is, is the budgets. I, I, I think we're all, it's fair to say, we're all concerned about the safety of our people and how we go forward in this situation. But it, it potentially could have impacts on the budget that we can't anticipate any better than we have. So I, I, I'd like to get back on the budget approval. Are there other areas that we'd like discussion on or that you all wish to?
The only other one I have is I'm not comfortable coming to Chief Moore's, other than I had the $15,000 without his duties and responsibilities being listed in writing. I think if you need a request for the taxpayers to know exactly what he's doing.
I think at this point, we can provide you with, with a written statement as to what those, what the extra work is he's doing. And, and right now, he really is, is our point person in the village, representing all of the emergency services in terms of work that we're trying to do to help mitigate this stuff. So the reason right now, I mean, he's doing a great job of, of providing some, some backdrop. I, I don't disagree with you that, you know, the firehead is doing a great job for us. And I think certainly the idea of whether we need to continue to have Bill as an overseer down there as well. But that individual, together with others in leadership in the town board that supports this budget, still support what we're doing. So I'm inclined to leave it there. But I don't mind giving you.
I'm okay with that. I just, I just want to know what he's doing for the fire department, for the $15,000. I just think, I mean, as many people in my, or any other position that we have, there's usually duties and responsibilities that along with it. And it's fair to have that in writing so we know exactly. Because I don't know.
I think, I think, I think I can, I can assemble that and, and give it to you in a manner that, to me at least, makes very clear sense as to what we're doing with Bill that may be above, it's above and beyond his day-to-day duties as the chief of police. His experiences are, are being put to work in, in other areas right now. As I said, I mean, as a point person for public safety of the entire community and, and that's a discussion that's going on every day.
But in my eyes, that's a chief of police position. That is not the fire department.
Not public safety, help or emergency services.
I think just coming from the other, the, we, we had it in the last conversation is to, so this is the last year, this is your last budget year. Unless somehow you.
There is no.
Suppressed, suppressed the election or put it off for another year. That may happen in November, but I don't know if that's going to happen much, but.
Maybe the governor.
That's all over there. Aside from that happening, if, from my perspective is that I never, I, I agree with Scott. We, I never really pushed it, only in the sense that it seemed to be a temporary, there's, at least I got the perception, it was a temporary to somewhat permanent, but there was, but if, I think it would behoove this board, if that's something that you, a structure that you would like moving forward for the next mayor and board, at least have it more legitimized, more formalized within sort of a motion to parameters. So then at that point, they have something tangible, structural-wise moving forward.
That's something I'd be happy to do, actually. And, and, and I'm not always certain it would always be the chief of police that would carry that responsibility. Happens to be at the present time that that was where we went.
Sure.
But I'm not saying that that's something that would always be that individual or that position.
And I'm not saying that he, he is not needed and the position's not valuable. It just, it just seemed to be a sort of a stipend and here's the position, but not in a very formalized structure. And that seemed not in, in line with what this board has done over a decade with very, making things very delineated, clear and explicit and, and having proper oversight. And I think that if anyone goes to walk away is having, being physically responsible and being very explicit and clear with their, over, like the older people of this whole village operation, I feel like that's the one sort of gray area that we've seen.
Really, I'm not opposed to hearing what you're saying. And there, there are really two key roles of the village. One is, is, is our public works department and then the other is public safety. And then it's not unusual in larger communities that they do have a person who is focused on the overall umbrella of public safety services because they do have to coordinate, they do work with each other. In our case, we have, we have this unique issue, unlike most communities our size, where we're dealing with just an endless stream of events and activities that require the coordination of all of these. And frankly, we don't always have someone in the other organizations that steps up to that responsibility.
Craig, maybe we have a job description for DPW? And is there a description of what they, DPW does, or Highway and Wana?
I don't know what it is, but we all, we all know what it is, but I don't have a description.
I mean, it would seem the same idea, in my opinion. Maybe if we're going to do it for, for Bill's position, it should be.
Probably for all of them. I don't have, we don't have written descriptions.
I wouldn't disagree.
Other, other than what civil service under, which is a far cry from, I think we would all agree that it's a far cry from reality sometimes. I'm not being critical of civil service, but these, these functions tend to evolve based upon the needs of the community as a whole.
There, there might be a provision in New York state law with regard to police chief. I'm not 100% sure.
On, on that part, I think you're, you're quite correct. I'm, I'm sure those are well-defined. I would think so.
Well, in most places, I think where, let's say, Andy McService came back into public safety, usually you have a commander, not a police chief.
And you know, you've mentioned that.
He would oversee the police department, which would have a chief. My driver.
And we're, we're just, we're structured a little bit differently than, than a lot of communities. A lot of communities, your, your fire, rescue, emergency services are all under the same rule as, as fire. But yet they have a different, usually they have a different personnel structure depending on what they do. But yeah, this, this has been working for us and we haven't known of that type of activity where I think today, for example, we're in, we're in a discussion with a hospital about services going forward with the summer with a lack of events and with the, some of the issues they're trying to deal with, including staffing. And, you know, the, I, I mean, one of the good things was Bill was still that right at his fingertips, the, the number of calls that emergency service, our ambulance makes, which I was surprised. It's about 20%, well, it's about 405 today or 404 versus 550 a year ago at the same time period. So we're down about 20%. I think that makes sense when we don't have people in town, we don't have the tenants. The hospital confirmed that one of the types of calls they get is from restaurants where people have gastronomic issues. Clearly, we haven't had restaurants in that situation.
They're out of technicality or something.
So I, I mean, the impacts are all over the place, but yeah, there, there are those type of things. But, but that, again, you know, we've been, we've been working for having, having, trying, trying to be responsible for the whole community of public services and especially during this pandemic period. It's been, it's, it's something I think Bill and I are in discussions just about every day. A lot of it is just trying to, and again, trying to work with Roost. Roost is a marketing firm, but we're trying to figure out how to, how to work with our, our, our community and how to work with visitors and get them to do the right thing so that we don't accidentally expose ourselves to something we don't want, which, which will also shut us all down again. So it, it's, it's an odd, it's an odd time, but I, I don't disagree with, you know, the overall discussion. I think, I think we should look at our job descriptions and, and re-roll up to date as far as our department heads are concerned. Would help us when we're looking at how we, how we go forward in terms of training people that go positions as they open up. At least about that. So back on budget.
You still there, Janet?
I'm here.
Without wanting, without wanting, Peter is. That whole piece for police that we would put, is it Peter or Mike? Into, into a separate contingency fund for now.
Right.
It makes sense. Anything else, any other changes or need to perform a general fund budget?
Motion to approve. Senator?
Any special? And your motion would include comments that have been picked up or included in the letter of abuse, that? In that case, then we'll call a motion. All those in favor, please say.
I think you need a roll call vote.
Is that a roll call?
We have done that in the past.
Yes, roll call.
We'll start with Deputy Mayor Devlin, Trustee Holdery, Trustee Leon, Trustee Monroe, and Mayor Randall. Aye. Okay, so the general fund is adopted for the year 2021. That commences August 1st. And for the public's benefit, the tax rate has been reduced from $5.067 a thousand to $5.059 a thousand. And so it's about a 7.7% reduction per thousand in assessed valuation. And that's significant issue for the community. And it will use $575,000 of unbalance, which is necessary. And also obviously, we're well under the tax cap issue because we took that out of the. So good work on that and good discussion. The next one, we need to adopt, let's see, water fund, if I can find it here.
Does fire come in?
Oh, you know, it's a quick, yeah. We'll, we'll be in one of these.
They all roll call.
The water fund is, is in balance and I'm happy to say this year that we're not recommending any change in the water rate. So with that said, and again, I want to just point out to everybody that the last three months, the water consumption has been significantly lower in the village. So going forward, we're hopeful that we'll come out okay. However, it's going to be light in the past when we're going forward. So I would ask for a motion, unless there's discussion on the water fund, I would ask for a motion based on. All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Aye. Trustee Devlin, Trustee Holdery, Trustee Leon, Trustee Monroe, Mayor Randall, aye. The water fund is done. Sewer is next. And again, the sewer fund, we're, we're recommending that they approve, it's in balance at the moment, without any changes in sewer rates. Coal revenues are forecast at 2.4 billion, slightly down from last year, not significantly. And we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, I reduced, not knowing how much waste we're actually going to get, just to find nothing being opened.
Yeah.
I shut up.
Once again, we, we've taken a conservative approach to it. However, as I mentioned, the water flows are down, sewer plant itself is affected by the reduced flows of water and that's increasing the cost of the chemicals and process that we have to use to treat the wastewater. So just so you're aware of the fact that those are some of the issues that are, that we're seeing right now and, and frankly, our future revenue could be affected. But we'll, we'll hang in there. I'm, I'm hoping that the reports of some of the local hotels, that bookings are strong for the summer are getting stronger.
It's hard.
Or that's encouraging. We're also hearing, I heard today from Jim McKenna at Roost, that it appears at least the month of May was stronger than Roost had anticipated the occupancy tax to be, but it substantially came from vacation rentals. So, but that, that's a reflection that some of the hotels had, had closed their operations to do other work. I know you did, Peter. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have done correctly.
I make a motion, we accept these, the budget is presented.
Second, Peter? Roll call again. And I, Deputy Mayor, Trustee Holdery, Trustee Leon, Trustee Monroe, and Mayor Randall, aye. Okay, the sewer fund's done. That leaves us the electric fund and this is, the electric fund is kind of interesting to work with because basically the, what, what we're looking at in terms of expenses, we, we, we have the revenue we take in from electricity and then we have the cost that we pay for electricity and what's left over is what we run the department on. And again, this year, we're, we're not forecasting a significant increase or reduction in electricity. We do, however, and we, again, we're a little uncertain about this, but there is a rate review going on and it's been going on for several months now with the New York Power Authority. Do not have, we had one the other day. And I don't think we really got a concrete answer, but they take them in terms of priority of need and Lake Placid is about number three behind some others municipalities that are looking for rate adjustments. So we don't know, but to some degree, I think we're anticipating that there'll be some rate increase. That was the reason why Paul sent it down to begin with, because we don't do that. If, if we get a rate review every seven or eight years, that's.
We haven't had one in like 14.
14 years. It's been a long time.
This doesn't represent any rate increase.
No, not at the moment. But just, just so you're aware of the fact that we are, we are, it, it is in the queue with the power authority for review. Other than that, this budget again, is in balance. And again, revenue sale, electricity can go up or down a certain amount and, and the net difference between the revenue and the cost of that power has been adequate to keep the department funded. And I think that's the important thing we need to know here. Also, unlike the other departments, the electric department is required to set aside reserves for replacements of equipment and other items. And those reserves are, are in good shape right now. So I'm not anticipating any, any knee-jerk issues that would cause a problem with the budget for next year.
With the electric department, did you leave the digger in there, but wait to see how revenue goes before they purchase it? Is that how that went?
We did not put the digger in there.
We did put it in.
No.
Yeah, I, I think we're dealing with. Yeah, I, I think we're dealing with uncertainties and trying to hedge our bets in ways that make sense. We do know right now that our accounts receivable for individuals who are not able to pay, did not pay for their power over the winter, and the governor's now extended that, looks like all the way to September.
Uh, no, actually, March thirty first was the last type of order that came up. So we cannot disconnect charge penalties or interest until March thirty first of next year.
So we, we are dealing with that at the moment. I believe that that probably started at something in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars. It's not, in, in, in the grand scope of the department, it's not awful, but obviously, our concern is we're going to have customers who, when they have to start paying for their power, are going to need some help. There's no way that some of these customers, we, we've looked at the list, are going to be capable of picking it up. On the other hand, there's a section of that quarter million that relates to businesses which are not subject to that restriction and they can be turned off.
And will be.
And will be this coming month that they don't start catching up. So, and again, I think even there, we need some, some payment arrangements if needed.
Yes, and Jason, I am working on those drafts of different payment options.
Okay.
For an admin review at this point, we've had, we have a little time. But with businesses, we're going back to April's balance to start them off, to keep them turned on. And then from there, we'll work.
I think just having that option by just having it laid out.
We don't want to put anybody in any more financial difficulty than they are, particularly the businesses that have been booked, that, you know, they still have lights on or they still have, you know, some function. Every TV box in their, in their hotel rooms has a little red light on it and that TV, and it draws electricity. So we're, we're not trying to put in anybody, but we have to try and recoup some funds at this point.
Yeah, we can. We'll, we'll, we'll work, we'll work with our customers as much as possible within the restrictions that we have to live with right now. So I make a motion, we accept the electric budget. Second.
Second, Peter.
Any further discussion?
Art Devlin, aye.
Devlin, we'll call a motion, Deputy Mayor Devlin, aye. Trustee Holderie, aye. Trustee Leon, aye. Trustee Monroe, aye. And Mayor Randall, aye.
Not relative to the, this actual budget, but if ever anybody is curious, the electric's budget doesn't ever look right. Because we expend, I, I have to put in the expenditures, like inventory items and, and large purchases into an expense account in our accounting system, because you can't book money to an asset. But the electric department in and of itself, I would say seventy percent of what they purchase is actually an asset. So when you look at the budget versus the year-to-date and you say, why isn't there any money there, but we have a whole bunch budgeted there, it's because it got booked to an asset. So if, if ever you're looking at it going, what is going on, and would like me to explain it, I'm more than happy to. Electric accounting is a hundred percent different than regular.
We were told that when we first came in, and I have a good feeling that it's exponentially better now than it was.
Yes.
Rules, rules, rules. That's what I'm just saying.
But as far as.
It's not a black box anymore.
It's how we book things and where they go and if ever you need an explanation. And with the new accounting software that we're getting, it'd be so much easier.
That was what you agreed to say, though.
A huge performance, we go live.
Almost.
Monday.
Or, or Monday.
Maybe. Our, our final data pull is tonight. And then they will do all of the balancing behind in their back office. And Monday, we are live with in code ten on the financial side. Utility billing will be as well.
Let me show you how confident we are in these school encampment.
Yep, with my laptop. I don't go anywhere without my laptop.
I don't get cell service for college anymore.
No, actually I really get cell service, I can keep it from the hot pot, so.
Okay, the next item we've got on the agenda that needs attention is the, at the December thirty first, the agreement between the town and the village, between the village and the town, provide fire services to North Elbe. And also this amendment here shows the northwest end of Lake Placid Lake, which is actually in the town of St. Armin. That was an item Janet that you and I on redoing, because we covered that, have a bullet.
Right, and I thi, I think the only, the, the town board has passed it. It's the same as prior years, with the exception that the town made a payment in May this year because we didn't have the agreement yet. I don't know whether the fire department has approved this. There, you will see attached to the back of that, the certification or approval of the volunteers. That's a step that has to be taken in order for the agreement to be finalized. I mean, the village can approve it, the town's approved it, but then you'd need, you need the fire department too.
You know, this, that'll, that'll come from, have to come from the officers in Torrey. The only plan that's left to fill in is the amount that we pay the volunteer organization to provide all this. And it's, and it's substantially supported by, about this sixty, it works from sixty seven to seventy percent, depending on your the town of North Elbe, the number that passed is filled in there, it's been sixty, and that's what we have with the current budget.
And Janet, we never got a payment in May.
Oh, you didn't? I, I thought, I was told, I thought you did, okay, well, then they're already, they're already in default.
But I spoke with Catherine Edmond and they're going to pay the full amount in July.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah. We actually started working on this renewal in November last year, but then there was a change of board and I spoke with Jack after the first of the year, and he suggested we hold off till February, well, February is now January. But there's no, there were no issues in the renewal of it so far as the town boards was concerned. They actually have to go to a public hearing before they approve this, and that's been done.
They've held, they've had the public hearing and they've actually signed the agreement.
So in our case, we don't, we're not required to go to a public hearing with it, we're just simply required to approve it and authorize the mayor to execute it. Craig, the town of St. Armin, do they have a contract with a similar to the towns? Uh, not with us, the town, this, I, I, I have no clue what the relationship is or the, how they work that out with North Elbe. It's separate from the, from our.
It's right.
Knowledge.
My guess is that they have one with the, the Sernac Lake Volunteer Fire Department. That's a guess. What, the hole, the hole in the geographic area is that northern end of, of Lake Placid Lake, which is the only part of St. Armin that would be covered by or serviced by our volunteers.
And it's mostly state land, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. Although there are camps up there and there have been two campfires, although not in St. Armin already this year.
There's definitely ten properties there.
Yeah, they used to, they camp right up in the very northern western side of the northern area that they put that down. I thought, I thought the state acquired that.
They did, stayed on site. Just the leaders on all the way up.
So I'm, 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 I don't think there's much improved real estate in that St. Armin portion, I think it's mostly forest land. On the other hand, who's a fire, who would be the first ones there?
It's more smoke and it's probably ten other properties there in that little bay.
Any, any questions or discussion required on this agreement? Or can I ask for a motion to approve it and authorize its execution? Scott move.
Second.
Your seconds. Not sure how long it's going to be.
Ready to vote on the fire unit?
All in favor?
Aye.
The agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Both standing? Standing, say this. You can take care of that.
I was just wondering if they have a meeting, how many people they're allowed to have a meeting, public, fire, volunteer fire department, you know?
My understanding is a gathering can be as many as twenty five.
No, it's fifty now.
Certain conditions, it's fifty.
I'm thinking about going down to the fire day, taking the process.
They have to social distance.
Fire day will allow them.
Yeah, they could do that.
Okay.
That would be as a precaution, I'd make sure they all had base nests. Okay, for the electric department, we'll set up the, this, this is the time of year when we normally will be renewing the TCC agreement. And his recommendation again this year, same as last year, is that given our configuration of our electric purchases, that we're, we're probably better off not to purchase the TCC piece this year. So I offer that to you and request a motion supporting this recommendation. We'll get that taken care of. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minimum years we use this, we, we made money on it. We're also using it in the last couple of years. You know, the argument has been that it doesn't look like we're going to be able to make it work the way we want it. By doing it the way we're doing this, we do reserve the right to continue in future years to purchase. Okay, so that's done. Okay, we, we have, the police department's been looking for one or two additional members. We have one tonight. Very happy to make the appointment, but I'd like you to review what. This is a female individual who will be coming to work as a full-time police officer. She's, she meets the civil service requirements. Her application indicates her education has, was in the field of criminal justice. Which she received in two thousand fourteen. She's got some additional training that she had previous to that in medical, in the field of medical assisting, I'm not sure what assisting. It's maybe it's not quite a nurse, but all the. In any event, the last couple of years, she's, she's, she's worked since May of two thousand nineteen for Berkshire Farm Center where she was a administrative assistant. It's an organization that deals with foster care. And her experience there was billing, transporting youth and families, supervising visitations, filing documentation, general office maintenance work. Her desire to leave that one, where she's still currently employed, is to get back into the criminal justice field. Prior to the Berkshire Farm Center, she spent let's see, it looks like about three, three years in working for the county sheriff's office, where she was a corrections officer working for the county correctional facility. And her reason for leaving there was to try something different. That's what took her to Berkshire and now she's looking, moved back into criminal, well, as a police officer. She has gone through all of the study of the police department. I know she went through the psychological part, because I saw her here with the great habit check, and she's doing it. And the department, at this point, feels that she will be the good candidate to bring into the department. The reason for wanting to get this out tonight and not hold it delayed any further, as we run into other years in the month of June when we're hiring. The academy starts Monday. So I, I'm perfectly happy to make the appointment of Mackenzie Anne Fuller as a full-time police officer. I recognize that she appears to be an appropriate candidate to add toward the department. It's been fully.
Craig, does she come under the new contract?
Even though I have no contract.
Is she, is she now under the old one or what?
She's being hired under the old contract, the original contract. And just, just off, well, I can say it, we were, we were, the MOU had, had been, had been agreed upon between the village and PBA. We were, I, I questioned because I hadn't heard anything about it a few days ago, and I was advised by Brian that at the last minute, the union has raised another issue and it has to do with whether the field training officers that they would be retroactive, that additional money which they've never received before, would be retroactive now to July first, that never came up in negotiations. So it's gone back to the drawing board, I have no idea what will happen, but Brian suggested that we not act on it. Yeah. So frustrating. So getting back to the appointment, I'm, I'm happy to make the appointment, Scott move. Art seconds, any further discussion, comments?
I think we're getting pretty heavy on the employment, these offices now.
Let me explain, eight and a half years, one officer leaving in October. And by the time we get this one out of the academy and on the street, the timing should be just about right.
We've been hearing that for, since I've been on board, that a member's going to retire. Anyway, it's, because it's a female on Mall Four.
You know, but I'm also concerned about the fact that as we build up to twenty.
We're running over fifteen thousand dollars.
Not going to be wrong. But I don't think we want to be waiting till the last year.
Well, if we want our officers trained, we have to have enough officers so that people can train.
And the good news is, you know, we're, we're at a point now where training, coming more, they're more able to get it done. And we have people now that are, and again, I don't know, maybe I don't want to discriminate by saying this, but maybe our younger officers, officers are interested. I, I can understand why our officers that are, that are approaching retirement probably are, are getting a little bit burned out. We blame them.
Well, it sounds like.
So Craig, the appointment was probationary, correct?
It is, all appointments are probationary, yes.
All right, just want to make sure that's clarified.
Because if I, we're saying about fifteen thousand dollars for police cars, which a real money isn't.
No, just a question about it, you're right. And again, you know, one of the other things that's coming up, I don't want to get off the topic too far, but the governor has some bond with this, this recent equal treatment under the law, or Black Lives Matter, or police brutality, whatever you want to call it. The governor has indicated that by April, every police department in New York State has got to do an inward search of its own operating standards and they're going to be held, they're going to be held accountable. And that's, I will tell you that we've had, we've had these preliminary discussions with the Aberondack Diversity Initiative Director, and actually I've indicated that I have some interest in listening to her. You know, certainly Lake Placid. I'm in the opinion that, I've always been in the opinion that we treat everybody equally and fairly in this community, and I believe our police department. And in fact, one of the organizers of the recent protest made a statement in an email telling me that she understands you don't have those issues in our department, haven't had. But nevertheless, wanted the protest to go forward here. But, you know, and, and I'm inclined to feel that same way about our department. I, I look at our department, I don't refer to them often as police officers, I may refer to them, and I who now quite often refer to them as peace officers. Because where I live, there's been a, there's been a number of calls over the last several years. And it seems to me that domestic disputes are the largest number of calls that they get in my neighborhood. Where they're, you know, they're calming down situations that are out of control. You know, just discussions with my stepson, who was a state trooper, those are not comfortable calls to have to make. But you think about cities such as Minneapolis that are talking about not having a police force. It's going to be very interesting to see what they come up with.
I don't think they're, I think they're just landing in order to. I don't think they're, I think they're dislanding in order to, uh, reform it in a way that cuts through the red tape.
Right, and it'll be very interesting to see how they come up with it and how different it might be.
I think it's been done.
So I think we're going to, I think there'll be more conversation with this board, uh, in the coming months as, as the department work through, uh.
So their, so the ultimate goal is to, to be very clear and have articulate, articulated, um, sort of procedures. Is that what the governor, I understand, is asking? And you're mentioning, uh, presented, maybe that's something that the board, the board could, uh, chose to do.
I would, whatever, I would give the whole board and, and pretty much have anything it pushes. And that's, that's our goal here. That's what we're supposed to do. But, uh, yeah, I think, I think we will have some conversations on that, and, uh, you know, I think I, just reading, I, I happen to read some of the commentary in the paper today, maybe, about the valedictorian of Cernac Lake High School. And, uh, you know, I, I, and I think I, I probably put myself in the same position. Some of the things she spoke about in her address to the, uh, community were things that her, that the superintendents of the school themselves didn't realize. I mean, there are things that are, are just so routine that we don't see them as discriminatory.
Always the only things.
So I, I, I think, I think it'll, it'll be, but, but certainly Lake Placid, we're, we're a community that thrives on groups coming here, and, uh, you know, and I've never felt that we made any distinction regarding, uh, race or nationality on, uh, on, on who comes to Lake Placid. But that doesn't necessarily, I guess, so that's not really the end of the story.
So we, I, we do have a diverse tourist community, so we don't just attract, uh, minority tourists. We also the other type of tourists, you may seem to feel that shift space for this certain somebody.
I, I think it's fair to say we're very, like, this community's very diverse in terms of the people that, uh, come here for whatever reasons they're here. But again, uh, I understand the trigger that caused this particular issue to come up as it did, and, uh, I think, uh, I think the Adirondack Diversity Initiative, which is really, uh, housed in the Adirondack Nkus, or Adirondack North Country Association's support, uh, started well before this. It was, it actually was starting around the time that we were hearing about the Kate Smith issue with the Philadelphia Flyers. So it's been around for a while, but, uh, anyway, uh, I look at it as, it's, it's something that can offer guidance and education. We'll hear more about it. So can we get back to the hire? Is there a motion? Scott did, and, uh.
Craig.
Call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Happy to welcome Mackenzie Fuller to, uh, the employ of the village, and she will be starting, I believe, first thing morning, as she drives to Blacksburg.
Unless she gets the water.
You see the car? They get to drive.
Yeah.
It's bigger. I don't know, there must be something good under the hood of those cars, because the car itself doesn't look like, it's pretty, it's pretty dated. Okay, uh, anything else? No, nothing else comes up tonight. We'll, we'll run into the treasure items. We have warrant, we have the 22 of the current budget here, uh, representing $821,601.75 of bills in that packet to be paid. That goes, Art seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pay the bills. And then the last item on the agenda for tonight is the water sewer re-levee, and Mindy, I'm going to have to run you for that.
Oh, gosh, I need to bring it in. Forgot it.
We might be adjourned, you know?
Oh, run. $130,000, that was like.
Sorry.
All in favor? Apparently, that's the one department that, uh, there's no executive orders that are, that, that give us from returning and re-leveeing this.
Probably is gonna be one hit, the correct cash price. They have to come with the money.
Maybe interest rates will drop a little more before they borrow up. Because that comes right back in places, this is county tax fares.
It was quick.
$130,000, $475,75.
Are there any, uh, that they don't need to, how many of them are, are those large balances? It seems to me there weren't many.
Um. By and large, there are plenty over plenty over 2,000.
Yeah, how, how many, how many accounts are we actually returning? Can you get that on that list?
155.
So, uh, it's less than $1,000 average per account.
Correct.
So only from over $1,000 would be, would be unusually large? I guess you don't have any. Actually, we can only report them dollars, but.
Nineteen thirty.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, over $1,000.
Anybody want to review the list before we vote?
Yeah, a lot of, uh, some of the larger ones are businesses. The vast majority of the large ones are businesses.
We have a first and a second.
Okay, we got a motion?
Yes, me.
And a second? Art, do a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? And actually, that's all we can take up? Can it this evening?
So we'll adjourn the meeting then.
Motion to adjourn. Second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and, uh, again, just to reassure everybody, uh, this meeting, uh, eliminates the need to conduct the meeting regularly, or meeting that was been scheduled for July 6th. The only thing is, if you keep it, social security, you're on the, uh.
Yeah, I did cross the map.
Happy 4th of July, everybody.
Happy 4th of July, and then we're done.